Allison. Is that Allison's phone number?
No.
Daughter's coming home and it's her birthday today, too, so. My daughter.
Well, happy birthday.
Okay, so now it is seven o'clock. I think we we definitely have a quorum, so. Um, in the interest of the agenda for tonight, I think um, we can get started. Can we have a, is, yes, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Yes, and as a reminder, please tell me where you're attending remotely from, whether it's from the city or in another location. And we'll start with Matt Kowalski.
Present, attending remotely from the city of Dexter.
Tom Phillips. Which I do not see yet. Jim Cardy.
Present, attending from the city of Dexter.
Allison Healy. I do not see Allison yet either. Chet Hill.
Present, attending remotely from the city of Dexter.
Kyle Marsh.
Present, attending remotely Dexter.
Karen Roberts.
Present and attending remotely from the city of Dexter.
Wah Hubbard.
Present, attending remotely from the city of Dexter.
Dustin Wise.
Present, attending remotely from the city of Dexter.
And student reps Charlotte Holly. Which I don't believe I've seen either. Eleanor King.
Present, attending remotely from the city of Dexter.
And Aiden Nott.
Here presenting, or here from the city of Dexter.
Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you very much. We definitely have a quorum. Next on the agenda is the action on the minutes from the virtual regular meeting of February first. Can we have somebody move the minutes, please?
Move.
Okay, moved Roberts. For support.
Port.
Okay, I'm sorry, I missed who that was. Oh, it's a chat?
Yeah.
All right, thanks. Okay, um, any changes, additions, corrections to the minutes as posted? Seeing none. Um, Carol, can you remind me, do we need a a roll call vote on these ones again, virtual?
Yes, we do. Both this, yeah, and, yep.
And basically on everything now that it's a virtual, correct?
The only thing is, is uh, that we don't have to is adjournment.
Yep, okay. Okay, so um, with that, could we have a a roll call on the uh, minutes for the February first meeting, please?
Okay, and I'll include the two that I absent, and just in case they've come in. And what, uh, Cardy?
Uh, I approve.
Uh, did you ask if there's any que- any comments or any corrections? Thank you. Okay, Marsh?
Approve.
Healy? Nothing there. Phillips? Hubbard?
Approved.
Wise?
Approved.
Hill?
Oh, prove again.
Oh, did I get?
Prove for somebody else.
Okay.
Got one reserved.
Robert? Yeah.
Oh, I made the motion, or yes, approve, okay.
Okay, and Kowalski.
Yes. Okay, so uh, minutes are approved. Next up is the approval of the agenda. Can we have somebody move the agenda, please?
I'll sit, I'll move.
Okay, move, move Roberts? There's support? Uh, was that Wah Hubbard? Okay, uh, sport Wah Hubbard, I should say, um. Roll call vote, uh, sorry, any additions to the agenda, changes, modifications? Seeing none. Um, can we have a roll call vote on the agenda, please?
Okay. I I don't believe I've seen any. Phillips? Hubbard?
Yes.
Wise?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Cardy?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Healy? No. Kowalski.
Yes. Okay, agenda is approved. Moving right along, item four, we have one public hearing scheduled for tonight. That would be the outdoor service areas code revisions. Um, it is a text amendment to the zoning ordinance. And um, with that first, I believe we will, I believe Mike will be doing the presentation for this. Yep, we have Michelle as a backup. And um, again, just so, I may be a little rusty here since I missed a couple months, I apologize, but um, if we could remember all to to raise our hands, and especially if I happen to miss it. Um, please let me know, because I'm also going to be looking for some tech chat comments from Michelle if we haven't asked her questions. So um, please let me know. I I have the hands open on the side, but a lot of windows going on, so. Um, with that, uh, I guess I will have Mike take it away for the uh, for the text amendment, please.
All right, thanks, thanks, Matt. Tom just joined us, Carol.
Okay, thank you.
So, um, I'll, I'll be, as Matt mentioned, I'll summarize the uh, materials of the pack, and then both Michelle and I can respond to questions. So um, this public hearing is an item that was postponed from last month's meeting. If the commission's revisiting proposed text amendments that would remove outdoor seating areas uh, for restaurants as a special use. And then establish three new categories of accessory outdoor service retail uses. Um, would conclude outdoor service areas or temporary outdoors, which is now display areas. Um, it also makes some revisions to open air businesses and auto dealerships. So uh, these are revisions. Um, these are, this is a revised version of amendments that the commission originally recommended to council in December of last year. Um, council asked um, the amendment to be updated to provide a clear distinction between the different uh, uses proposed. And so that's what's uh, before you tonight. Section twenty-three oh six of the zoning ordinance establishes the criteria for considering text amendments. Um, so to summarize on what's been provided, according to that criteria, um, the needs for these amendments has been something the commission discussed over the past few years. Um, in twenty seventeen, both Aubries and Dex, uh, for different reasons, um, needed amendments to their outdoor seating areas. Um, but because of the special land use classification, and that wasn't something that staff could approve administratively. Um, and so um, uh, after discussing it with the city attorney, the city attorney said in his opinion that the special land use classification for outdoor seating areas seems a little cumbersome and more time consuming. Um, these amendments would also allow us to accommodate um, sidewalk business and retail activity in a way that has been um, an economic lifeline for business during pandemic. And allow that activity to continue um, uh, both uh, at the present and on into the future. The uh, the amendments would address um, both those immediate needs and be consistent with the objectives of the master plan, which include promoting and coordinating activities aimed at improving the business climate within the city and plan for and promote tourism in the city of Dexter. So with that, to summarize the proposed, the outdoor display area would be an accessory use um, that would require special land use approval. And that would be um, an area of five hundred square, uh, five hundred fifty square feet or greater. Where items could be displayed um, adjacent to if the principal uh, building, commercial activity. And remain outdoors, they would not need to be brought in overnight. The temporary outdoor display area is similar. Um, it would be an accessory by right use permitted in C one, V C and C B D. It would need to be an area of five hundred fifty square feet or less, and the items displayed would need to be brought in and stored at night. Those could be permitted in a public right of way, uh, such as a sidewalk or private property. The outdoor service area would replace the restaurant outdoor seating as uh, as we have it today. It would be an accessory use, so it would be approved administratively instead of a special land use. Um, it would be permitted in C one, V C, uh, the C B D district, and it would be a special use in the R D uh, district. Oh, no, I'm seeing away from, no, okay, it will not be a special use in the R D district. So um, both the outdoor service area and the temporary outdoor display area will require annual renewal. Um, outdoor service areas, in addition to that annual renewal, um, will be permitted to use public parking spaces as they have over this past winter between November first and April, oh, I, excuse me, um, through May first and no, and November first. And then through um, November through April, um, they'll be permitted to, parking space use will not be permitted, but they could have temporary structures as we've seen on on Main Street, um, igloos, that sort of thing. Then lastly, um, the I I won't go through the open air business changes. Um, that use in the auto, the automobile dealership use were reconciled to be consistent with the new outdoor display area amendments. Um, so the motions uh, to approve or on page or, or suggest changes are on page nine of the packet, and Michelle and I will take any questions. Oh, Michelle has her hand up, Matt.
Thank you. Oh, okay, so, okay, yes, Michelle? Right.
I'm I'm trying to open the chat, Michelle.
Oh, okay.
Well, go ahead and start talking. I'll take my hand down, write my comment, and then I'll put my hand back up.
Okay, I'll go into the public here, okay, so, okay. Um, okay, so with that staff presentation, um, we will now open the hearing, the public hearing. This is for anybody who would like to comment on this text amendment. If you're on the phone, uh, please, as, I'm sorry, I forgot, is it star, star six to raise your hand?
Star nine.
Sorry, star nine, please, to raise your hand if you're on the phone. So we will open the public hearing now at seven twelve. Couple minutes for anybody that would like to speak on the text amendment for the outdoor service areas. Scanning, I don't see anybody. I don't think I'm missing anybody, Mike.
I don't see any hands.
Okay, I guess with that, it is seven thirteen now. We will close the public hearing. And um, so with that, we will now have a commission debate. If we have a, we do have a motion, as Mike had mentioned, it's on page nine, there's a couple of motions. So at this time, there's a couple of avenues for us to, we can proceed with recommending approval of the amendment. Of course, we can recommend a denial of the amendment. We can also postpone it to a day. So with that, again, page nine of the packet, if somebody would like to make a motion, then we can have some planning commission discussion. The floor is open for motion.
Okay, I'll make the motion. Pursuant to section twenty-three point oh, this is number one. Pursuant to twenty-three point oh six, the city of Dexter zoning ordinance, together with the information presented by staff and input received during the public hearing conducted by the planning commission on March first two thousand twenty-one, the planning commission recommends city council approve AP twenty-two point oh three dash oh, oh, yeah, uh, dash of three point two, outdoor service area zoning ordinance text amendment, amendments as, uh, sorry, provided you're in.
Okay, thank you. Moved Roberts, through support?
I'll second it.
It's like, support wise?
Yep.
Um, all right, now we have the floor open for commission discussion. Questions, and again, if you can raise a hand or somehow say to me, that would really help. Okay, thank you, yes, Mr. Hill.
Um, I'm confused by the dates. On um, section three point three, A three, as you mentioned, Mike. Permitted outdoor service areas may be operated all year. However, the use of public on-street parking spaces shall be limited to May one through November one. The good weather months. Wasn't I mean, this year, it wa- it would have been more appropriate to be November one to May one because of the bad weather, right? I mean, as I say, who's using those parking spaces? Who would be using them, or who would even want to use them in in the warm weather months, the middle of the year? So that's what confuses me.
Question for staff, Mike, and I see, uh, Wah Hubbard, I see your your hand up as well, so we'll we'll get.
I'll definitely. Mike will probably cover it.
Okay.
You're asking why the uh, the parking space, you, um, why the parking spaces would be used during the the, uh, May through November months as
Yeah.
And, okay, um, I think we saw a fair amount of activity over the, this past summer, with the use of the spaces. Um, the primary concern was during the wintertime, the conflict with snow clearing. And that those, the big plastic barricades would just be an immense problem for the D P W. So I I think that concern primarily, uh, we didn't want to include them to be used, the parking spaces to be used for outdoor seating during the winter. Um, does that address the question?
Well, in other words, if COVID continues on through next winter, it's not allowed except by special use or something? What's, you know, what's been done this year?
Oh, um, so this would be um, essentially allowed on ongoing basis. Um, just the uh, the exception being that, um, and again, for the primary reason of of, to allow for snow clearing, we wouldn't permit outdoor seating areas in parking spaces during that that winter month timeframe, just i- if there were a s- a snow event.
Okay, I've also got a um, a, if I might. Um, a, um, what I would say would be a better way to phrase things on on page um, page one forty of this packet, where you've got the illustrations. I know in dealing with the um, ADA ramp issues, um, for quite some time, that when you say ramps that that exceed a one to twenty-five percent, some people read that, well, okay, exceeding one to twenty is actually one to twenty-one or or worse. When in fact, that would be fine. And so it it's in, it's a matter of interpretation for um, many people that maybe it would be better to say shall not exceed five percent, and then put the one to twenty in parentheses. It's a little bit more understandable, I think, at least from my perspective. Um, I know what you're saying there, but from, uh, it's easily to be, it's easily confused by some people, so. Just a suggestion, comment, take it where you will.
Okay.
The way that's worded, working with code, I I agree, I could see how sometimes people might take that a different way, or it might be open from interpretation.
Right.
Okay, um, and I know, so I'm sorry, was that, was that all for the comment?
That's all I got.
Okay, thank you. Um, so I know, and Michelle did type a comment in the chat. I will be reading these comments because again, I know that most of us, I believe, can see that chat comment, but if Michelle does make a comment, we want it to be entered to the public record, so I'll be reading it, so. Um, but Michelle basically just added on what echoes Mike, but use of the on-street parking on Main Street is only during the good weather months. So that we kind of just covered that, but I did want to read that because Michelle contributed that. So um, with that, um, yes, while we have, you have a comment?
Uh, yeah, that, and just that, um, chat, we did bring that up at the last city council meeting, and we were talking about that, excuse me, that May first date. And looking at the possibility of bumping that, you know, sooner, um, but yeah, there's still discussion about, it's it's snow, it's basically snow.
Okay, thank you. Okay, and then I know Commissioner Roberts and then Commissioner Phillips.
Um, I, or I have a cou- a couple of questions. I've got some typos that I should probably just email you or something, but okay, the open air business, would that include the farmer's market? No, okay, all right, because I thought that, I thought the half acre minimum was was pretty large, but if it's, you know, if it's really mainly nurseries that you're picturing, then, that's right, I think, right? That's the example of nurseries.
That's, that's one of them.
Sales, things, yeah.
All right, um, and then, um, I was confused by, it's on page um, one ninety-two, that um, the you, the parking lot setbacks, or you know, that if you're using um, you know, parking spaces, the setbacks between, at one point, it sounded like it was two feet, and one point, it sounded like it was three. Now I'm saying it's on page one ninety-two, but, yeah, okay, so the the diagram on one ninety-one shows kind of what you get, if you need three spaces because because you you're kind of, you take the equivalent of one space, and then you dip into all at three feet into the two on the parking side. And then somewhere else, it has a two-foot setback from
Thank you, if, I, oh, sorry, Karen, thanks for pointing that out, I was, that was actually something I forgot to mention. If, uh, so I, um, that, those, uh, the the three feet to either side adjacent to the space and the two feet setback from the travel lane is uh, what we, is the the setbacks we went with for the use of parking spaces when they were permitted this past summer and fall, I think that was, I I I can't remember if we took those setbacks from another example ordinance, or if it was uh, through a discussion, internal discussion. But we wanted to keep that some minimum buffer between adjacent spaces and the travel lane, and then that second image on page one ninety-two. Um, the outdoor service area with the red area, we would actually need to revise that image. Um, that was from this past summer when we were permitting uh, retail e- activity in the parking spaces, which in our estimation, didn't need as much space as an outdoor dining area. So the minim- so the the minimum uh, required area for an outdoor service area, which we rest- restaurant only, would be three spaces in total. But I think as, it it would also, that would include those setbacks from adjacent spaces and the the travel lane at minimum.
Okay, okay, I think I get it, all right.
Okay, yeah, okay, all right.
Thanks, that, those are my questions.
Okay, thank you. Um, Commissioner Phillips?
Uh, hello, I, uh, I think these are, the, I I want to build on what uh, chat said, build on, um, talk about these ramps. Uh, I think that the sketches of the ramp locations are helpful in describing to business owners who are not doing a a real renovation what to consider. However, I don't think we should have anything in here about ADA other than to refer to the code. The code defines what ramps, defines ramps very well and very thoroughly, and 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 this is basically uh, somebody's interpretation of what something else says, which is to me always a mistake. So we have an ANSI code and a Michigan barrier free, and and I I would suggest that uh, other than say that it needs to be, you know, it it's not ADA accessibility, really, it's it's Michigan, it has to follow Michigan barrier free, which considers ADA, which is a constitutional amendment. It actually can never comply with ADA, because ADA is not a code, it's it's an entitlement. So it's always a mistake to say something meets ADA a- as a general practice, because it can't, it doesn't work that way. Also, we have is guidelines that that, uh, you know, like the the state, or usually it's the state or federal government have um, judged to uh, to adequately reflect the intent of ADA. So.
Okay, um, Michelle, do you, do you um, get how we could proceed with making those tweaks?
Thank you, yeah. I was kind of wondering, well, even before Commissioner Hill brought up about the slope issue, because I didn't, we didn't usually spell out that kind of degree regarding the ADA and other issues, I was a little bit, I was kind of questioning, but yeah, now that Commissioner Phillips brought it up, if we don't necessarily need to, probably a good reference, since it's covered elsewhere. We don't really cover that in the zoning code anyway, so.
Yeah, and and I'll, I'll put in the chat thing what those codes are, if somebody's uh, wants to look them up.
Yeah.
Just as a guideline. It, yeah, so, and it is also a building department issue, uh, really, it's not a planning issue anyway, but anyway.
Yeah, correct, we don't regulate that under any of our planning issue or codes. Okay, additional, uh, so getting some good feedback on this, other planning commission, I don't see, or, well, Tom, I hands still up, but I think we addressed.
Oh, I'll take it down, sorry.
Oh, that's right, but thank you guys for using your hands so far, so, um, with that, we're looking for, are there other planning commissioner questions? Again, so there were some questions, clarifications brought up right now. The motion that was put out originally was for approval and seconded, so um, if, again, I, we're looking for discussion, if people still feel comfortable uh, with those questions, I I see Michelle just raised her hand, we can go forward with that motion, we can always, again, revise. Uh, they can withdraw that motion and put one for to postpone if they feel it's necessary, but I will look to Michelle, because she just raised her hand, so she's oh, and include Karen's typo comments, we will include that in the end revision as well, so um, so with that, do you, um, so that, I believe Roberts, you made, what's my agenda, the original motion, correct?
Do I have to just add on that we're gonna make um, sort of edits as discussed?
Yeah, you, as no, as noted, correct, edits as mentioned, I think, or noted in the meeting.
You know, I'm amending my motion to say we're gonna add the edits that were discussed in a, you know, planning mission discussion, and then I forget who seconded.
Okay, Wise.
I'll second it.
Okay, so, one thing, um, I want to make sure, though, uh, Michelle or maybe Mike can answer that, I I use kind of clear on the ADA, the ADA issue, sorry, that was just brought up. That maybe, are you guys clear on that? You you have enough direction that you feel, okay?
Okay.
I think generally if the commission, okay, still supports that motion as as presented. Um, okay, so with that, do I see any other, I see no other uh, commission hands up. So I think with that, Carol, if we could have a a roll call vote, please?
Yes. Hill?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Wise?
Yes.
Cardy?
Yes.
Kowalski?
Yes. Okay, thank you all. Moving right along, you're welcome, Michelle. Um, so next on the agenda, we have our prearranged citizen participation, which we have no citizen participation prearranged today. Next is non-arranged citizen participation, so this is a time where anybody that's listening in our audience can, um, if you're on the phone, please hit star nine, and you can raise your hand and address the commission on anything that's not on, well, was listed as a public hearing, we recorded. Don't see any hands raising in the audience. And star nine. All right, seeing none. Move right along to none, or sorry, to reports. The first chairman report, um, it's just good to be back. Thank you all, I may be a little rusty, I really missed a couple meetings, which was not good. I apologize for that, it was kind of a work commitment, I try not to let that happen, but you know, it it happened, so hopefully not for a little while. Um, so it is good to be back, and and we get new faces, it seems like every time, every last three or four meetings, so, welcome to a lot of new people, I think it's pretty exciting. Okay, so really, that's it, we'll go on to planning commissioner items, is there anything, uh, planning, any planning commissioners wish to share at this time? We do have a zoning, a committee report later in the, and on the agenda, so if there's anything else, planning commissioners would like to share, raise your hand? You know, include student reps, anything from our student reps? Oh, I'd seen no hands raised, all right, um. No hands raised, all right, um. Oh, committee reports, well, but we're going to cover the main committee report later on the agenda book, there, um. Any other committee reports at this time? Hang on, no, yep, so, uh, community development office report, we, uh, I think we'll kind of pass over Michelle for today. Any questions, of course, please feel free to, uh, email her, she can respond much better through email. Um, so right now we'll cut her a little bit of a break.
I should, pardon me for interrupting Matt, but I should report on the ZBA meeting where a ten-foot variance. The front yard setback for a, um, to save a large hickory in, uh, thirty-two seventy-four East Ridge was approved.
Okay, thank you, so so one, just one item on the agenda then, obviously?
Nah, that was the only variance request.
Okay. Yeah, okay, thank you, so that was a bit of a committee report from the zoning board. All right, so, moving right along, we'll get, we got to the reports of the officers' communications, we don't have any community, oh, I guess Kyle raised his hand, Kyle, yes, would you like that?
Yeah, just a minor thing, I recently have run into a. Um, kind of a quirky issue on the zoning, we probably will talk about it when we do our zoning update, but. It regards to a front stairs in the front setback, it kind of goes with your porch thing, Matt, from Ann Arbor. And so, um, I think we're going to keep the existing ones for now, but. You know, it's one of those things where it's like, hmm, we should look at that.
Look into the.
Yeah, where, um, I noticed Chelsea, you can stick your front steps into the setback three feet or something. And we don't have that yet. I think it'll be all right, but, um, it's something that I was like, okay, bring that up.
Yep, that's it, good point for review. Um, okay, uh, seeing, oh, that's still Kyle, uh, all right, so communications, we don't have any communications tonight. Old business, no old business, we have lots of new business, so with that, um, we'll start with new business, item ten on our agenda. The capital improvements plan, something so exciting, I know we all look forward to every year. For you new commissioners, you get to look through the entire packet, which is really exciting of all those CIP projects. So I believe, uh, Michelle has her hand up, does that mean you want to say something, or, okay?
Easier this way, um. I'm the only one that's gonna do chat tonight, if you all put comments in chat, Matt has to read them. So, Matt, you have to go back and look at the chat real quick, well. So, Karen provided typo comments. Um, Tom provided comments regarding, um, the ADA stuff he talked about. So, no more chat, guys. Okay, just me.
Okay, all right, so I will, um, I have the, yeah, okay, because I'm looking at your chat, so I'll see your chat, Michelle, and if you, if I happen to miss it, please remind me, but, um. Okay, so I also, now Megan's, yes, Megan?
Also in the chat, just know that that's a, that that can be foiled, so that everybody should be aware.
Yeah, right now I only have Michelle's chat window open because I have a lot of windows going on, so I can only keep track of one, so, um. So, okay, but thank you for that reminder, Megan and Michelle. Um, okay, so now, launching into the CIP, who, Mike, were you going to give us the intro on that, I assume?
Sure, yep.
Okay, all right, take it away, Mike.
All right, uh, so as a little background, um, the CIP is a document the Michigan Planning Enabling Act requires. For all cities, villages and townships, um, and it is, uh, a plan that lists all the major, major and non-recurring expenditures over a six-year period. And it's updated annually, um, the CIP is meant to identify funding sources for the project. And prioritize them according to the objectives of the master plan. And the CIP is, uh, completed each year around April and is meant to inform the upcoming budget. So the, in excerpts from the, um, from the executive summary. As well as a table that summarizes all the changes that have been made to each CIP project and all the individual project work sheets included in the packet. One of the big changes is that there was a large, uh, change in the dollar amount of expenditures of the plan, the the previous year, it was roughly. Uh, twenty-four million five hundred, it's now down to thirteen five hundred, um, a a lot of that is. To, uh, project the, uh, Phase Two Main Street Underpass Project. Which, uh, had a ten million dollars in expenditures dedicated towards it, um, that had been in the CIP since two thousand eight. And it's a, um, a road commission project outside of the city, um, and as it's come up at, um. Time and time again, A, it's not something that the city has much control over and also, um, alternatives to the viaduct there, which is roundabout and. Found not to be viable, um, the road commission's not moving forward with it, we removed it from the CIP. The, um, other, uh, the largest planned projects. Um, are in Parks and Streets, the Third and Broad Reconstruction. And Dexter Crossing Asphalt Replacements, um, and there's a, there's a typo in the executive summary for those project years, they'll be in twenty-one, twenty-two. And twenty-two, twenty-three, um, fiscal years, those are some of the of the larger up upcoming projects in terms of expenditures. And then the, uh, larger, longer-term projects include, again, in terms of expenditures, include Mill Creek Phase Three. And the, uh, remainder of the Broad Street Reconstruction, which would be the segment, uh, from Main Street. Um, just before that, that, uh, the curve at Third and Broad. So there's, there's two things, specifically with like the commission's feedback on, first is any and all. Uh, comments, suggestions or edits for the plan, and then there are five new planning projects, uh, specifically that we'd like your feedback about. Those are meant to address, um. Uh, in, uh, projects identified in the implementation table and master plan. And I'll be happy to take any suggestions and if it helps, I can pull those projects up on the screen if anyone has comments.
Thank you, okay, so, um, with that, uh, we now have some commission discussion. And, uh, again, really, at at the end of this process, we we still have a couple, we can continue our discussion, if if, uh, planning commission feels comfortable, we can set a public hearing. For April, I believe, yeah, we have mentioned that it could be ready, but again, obviously, that's that's no need, we can discuss it out here tonight, if we need additional follow-up, we can request that as well. So, um, with with that, uh, are there planning commission questions, comments, hands up? All right, yes, Mr. Hill?
I've got a, a question and a, well, a couple of questions. First of all, who is it, who develops the, um. Justification scores for these projects, is that, how is that done?
That's a secret.
Can't tell you, um, now the, uh, it's either whoever introduces the project, usually staff. Or the the body that introduces the projects, I know the Parks Commission, I introduced several this year, they they apply the justification scores.
I see, so, whether it's important or desirable or can wait to be decided is just based on the scores, based on. General, how it's, how it's, how it's been raised in the first place and the general feeling of how important it is, really, right?
Uh, yes, there's different, there's different categories, um, that each have a numeric score associated to it. And depending on the the total, the the highest combined score is fifteen, um. And then the, I mean, I I believe brought lower products are around a score of ten. But, um, whoever introduces the project usually determines those and the and the planning commission or council can adjust this.
Oh, I'm not being critical, but it is sort of arbitrary in that regard, right?
Um, there's, um, it it says subjective in terms of, uh, whoever introduced the project, you know.
I I think if I could add though, too, there are some, um, you know, with regarding in particular utility projects, I mean, sometimes those are things that are out, you know, they they bump up, so. We have things that, you know, we we make our justification, but it's not like, I mean, not necessarily we, but people. And then some of it was ours, I remember in the past, through planning commission ideas, but also, yeah, utility, when it goes to the admin and stuff, I'm sure they can add. Um, and Michelle has her hand up, maybe she'll add more like certain infrastructure projects, when we get the funding, it may move up on the schedule and things like that.
And there's, there are certain things like that that have to be done.
Correct, like, so there are ways that that, in, you know, grants are available and things like that, um, but I know Tom Phillips has his hand up, but Michelle, do you? Did you add, you have something to add? Justification, Michelle adds justification and priority are different, you can have a high justification project, but a low priority. Correct, exactly.
I got one other question before I surrender my.
No problem, I mean, we can always come back, no problem.
I'm I'm curious about the new project, the traffic study on the alleviation of the tunnel congestion, what is that all about?
Um, that's meant to be a more comprehensive look at traffic and congestion citywide, um, it's identified in the master plan. Um, that, obviously, there's the, the viaduct gets the most attention, but there's other major traffic, there's other corridors that introduce traffic and contribute to the. Um, experience of traffic in the city, and so that, uh, the master plan. Recommends the next step would be to kind of look at all of the different, um, components of, uh. Vehicular transportation in the city, it's try to get a, a picture of, um. A traffic situation overall instead of just the focus on the viaduct.
So who does that?
Um, that would be in the, uh, let's see, it's identified in the. So the planning commission and city council is directed, uh, to be responsible for that in the master plan, I think, um. Michelle or Matt, it would be at whatever point there's a time and the, I either council or the commission's, uh, agenda to. And I'm sure if fun, if there's funds available as well to initiate a study like that.
Okay. One thing I was going to ask, so to follow up that, I did have kind of a question, is, it it does reference just a tunnel, when was that? I mean, it it it's kind of, is that specific just, but it's kind of like an overall thing, I thought, right? I mean, it kind of highlights the tunnel congestion, so I don't know if we. Maybe should give it a little better description to say that it's more. Comprehensive, or, I I mean, I know this is just a placeholder, so I don't want to go too much on that, but, um, and I know that's a major focus of it, is obviously the tunnel, but.
Well, that that is an important distinction, so, um, that we we do want it to be a comprehensive study and then not just the tunnels. We could wordsmith the description.
Yeah, exactly, and and one other thing I know, we, when we get to the point with wordsmith it, but also, I would put out for, you know, traffic again is just, seems like it's motorized, or it is motorized. Is there a way to, I mean, not just traffic, why don't we look at with that traffic study, other. You know, modes of transportation that were encouraging in the city, either walking, pedestrian travel, things like, or and bicycle travel, I think that should be part of any traffic study. Because we're only inviting more of that, which is a good thing, so, um. Okay, with that, I I know that Tom had his hands up first and then and then Kyle, so, Tom.
Yeah, to Chad's question, also has to do with, uh, you know, where people live and so on, for example, uh. Like the connector to, uh, West Ridge from town was really high and expensive on that list. Whereas the connector from like Huron Farms to the border-to-border trail is very low on the list. So part of that is that Huron Farms has nobody on council. Even though we have two hundred and sixty-five houses, we're a pretty low priority. So, uh, that that plays into, uh, into it apparently as well.
Yeah, thank you, Tom, um, Kyle, next, and then Mr. Cardy.
Thanks, Matt, I'm just wondering, what is the process for submitting, um, a capital improvement for consideration? Do we do that? I mean, as members of planning, can we bring a, uh, idea for one of these things? How would we kind of do that?
Yeah, we certainly could, I mean, we we've mentioned it in other, um. You know, other meetings in the past and and it gets up, I I think it it's something that does involve obviously some staff. Work at least initially to make sure that it's something that's viable and have. You know, in within the realm of possibility, but also as after planning commission discussion, if it's deemed worthy, it's something that could be added. But, I mean, Mike, Michelle, if, correct me if I'm wrong there, but, um, we can add that after discussion.
Yep, yep, that that's, uh, that, that's pretty much it, and Kyle, if you had something in mind, you could email Michelle and I if you wanted to, um. It said we'd have to draft the, what the worksheet looks like, and so we could. Talk about that offline and if there's, we could work on, work with you on that and put together something to present if you wanted to do that.
Thanks, Mike, I appreciate it.
Okay, thanks, Bob, um, and Mr. Cardy next.
So this is my annual request that the community parks quote-unquote improvements be removed from the plan. Uh, this project calls for creating a looped path in community park. There is no one asking for this path, whoever came up with this years ago, um, came up with it before the park was fully in use. Anyone who goes out to that park knows that the last thing it needs is more pavement. Where they're suggesting putting the path goes directly through where kids kick soccer balls every day. It goes direct directly through where after every snowstorm, kids sled. Um, this is a thoughtless project that has no support from anyone in the community. If you were to actually go out there and survey people who use that park about this, I doubt you could find a person in favor of it. And so it's it's just my annual request, every time we do this, I make the request. Um, I've made progress to the point that I now see the narrative said planning commission does not fully embrace this project, this improvement. That's a little improvement, and next I want, I, you know, I'm going to keep arguing until it's out, if it ever comes close to getting funded, I'm going to organize community support against it, so. Once again, this is my request to remove it, there is no one who wants it, it, the last thing that park needs is more pavement. It literally will take away a place the kids play every day, so there's my annual pitch on that.
Yes, uh, thank you, and I think, well, yeah, and I do remember, you're absolutely right, we have discussed it, and I don't think there's a ton of support from planning, but I know that there's other elements at work play between parks and things, but. Yeah, we appreciate that comment, uh, Jim, and it never hurts to make the comment again, because, like I said, I think the commission generally agree with you, so. Thank you, okay, so, um, Mr., well, wait, Tom had his hand up.
Okay, yeah, I I concur with what, uh, Jim said also, and, uh, I've talked to Justin about this. I think this is partially a misguided understanding of barrier-free requirements that. Every swatch of grass needs to be, uh, wheelchair accessible, which is not correct, it never has been. It's somebody, it probably at the village back then is flawed understanding of. How you design a park, I'm in generally against overall cutting the budget, the paving budget of our parks, uh, department, I don't, I don't know why. Uh, we have people in charge of parks who are fascinated with paving everything, and I I couldn't agree more with what Jim said. And I also, I did have to, uh, whoever his point that was earlier, I had two suggestions. For the CIP, one was that the city, uh, provide, uh, site lighting for, uh, Dexter Park of downtown. Downtown events around the gazebo, that 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 lighting be provided by the, uh, city. For example, the ice sculptures, uh, were really, I thought, kind of pathetically lit, um, amateurishly done. It would be nice if the city provided some overall lighting for events like that. And then I suggested that, uh, we have a mechanical means, uh, if we bring back the ice rink. In town, that we have a mechanical means of cooling that rather than trying to rely on the weather. And the last one was a fixed, maybe a single bathroom. Uh, for community park, so I I'm not sure if those made it in this year, I know it wasn't that long ago, but those were things I threw out there.
Right, thank you, Tom, um, Commissioner Wise, and then I believe, uh, Commissioner Hubbard.
I I just have a quick question, um, how long do these stay in the SIP program?
Um, until they're, until they're done, um, the.
For a different reason.
Yeah, or.
Um, so they can literally just be in here forever?
Potentially, it again, it's, uh, it it identifies everything from, uh, like immediate projects where funding is available and they're definitely going to happen to. Projects that the city would like to see done at some point, but, um, aren't necessarily doable now, for example, this community parks improvement project that was nineteen ninety-eight is the year it was.
Yeah, let's just say there's some projects that have been in there since I've been on planning commission, so, I mean, that's, it's, yeah. But.
Because some of these have been in here for twenty years. Yeah, so I was just looking, I'm like, so is this like a wish list?
In some ways, it 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 can be, but it's a priority.
Yeah, I'm just curious, like twenty years, like priorities, and then it's like, if it's been in there for twenty years, then at what point is it? Not happening?
Did you have a comment, Michelle?
Okay, no, yeah, no, I think it, that's, it's a good point, I mean, I think you're right, we re, I mean, although, again, this is our opportunity to say, well. We, and again, this Commissioner Cardy pointed out, the one we've expressed, I think, generally is a planning commission support. I think generally is a planet commission support of removing that one. So do do things like that, and that will go forward to. Uh, with our comments, of course, to council. So again, they can, if they see fit, move that around as well. So. But some of them are kind of wishlist. I think City Hall's been on there since I've been on. Planning commission for twenty years, the City Hall location, choir hall. So there's things that have been on there forever, but.
We're working on it. We're working on it.
Okay, yes, that is true. And there are placeholders. Again, there's certain things that we identify that maybe when funding becomes available, we can look after certain. Things that that may be good. I don't want to say wishlist projects needed, but not necessarily on the highest priority. Um, okay, so with that uh commissioner, I'm sorry, I lost track whether it was Commissioner Hubbard for, I believe Commissioner Hubbard and then Commissioner Roberts.
Yeah, I just had a quick uh question for circling back to what Tom was just saying about the lighting. Um, Tom, I don't know if you're aware, but like I um, so I I've been co-chairing the Paint Dexter Festival for a number of years now, and that is a city. Event, and we contract out that lighting and lighting is just something that we're always talking about. So I'm just wondering what. Like, what is it that you would envision the city providing? I mean, we don't really have. The means to provide that.
I guess I would see that uh that the city hire a uh a lighting designer. To uh look at ways to light the park around the gazebo.
So just better lighting in park and the park in general.
Ri- well, but I guess that would be an option, whether it's fixed lighting. Um, that's permanent, that's certainly an option, but I was thinking of. Just even if it's temporary lighting, I thought that it's something that that could be professionally. Uh, kind of designed and become like a an amenity that the that the city provides when we have an event out there, even whether it's Dexter Days. Rather than people just string cables all over the place and 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 having individual lights and individual little, you know, uh uh. Tenant spaces or whatever. Just have something that just looks better. I I I just. The the ice uh sculpture just struck me as something that looked really kind of hacky. I I think there was a lot of effort that went into that. Uh, by the people that that produce the ice sculptures. And the lighting looked kind of like it was an afterthought, and I thought that was kind of a shame. I think that. Um, that park in general could really benefit a- as well as our events could really benefit by some uh a more professional. Approach to how we deal with the lighting. And I think it can be, to your point, it can be either temporary. That maybe that, you know, the city has somebody put it up for an event. Or it can be permanent. And I I think it would be better permanent, but I I wasn't even thinking about that, honestly.
Yeah, I mean, it's definitely two different issues, and I mean, lighting gets really expensive. I will throw that out there.
Yeah, and that's why I thought it was perfect, better for the city to handle it than than individual events bear the cost of it. I I thought the city could be much more efficient and do it a lot better. Than say, okay, Dexter Days, you've got to figure out the lighting and and whatever and or the ice.
The only problem with that, and I don't want to belabor this point, but the only the only issue with that is like when you're trying to light an event. That is very specific, and so that is definitely something that would be contracted outside of the city, in my opinion, because I don't think we're ever gonna have. You know, a lighting, we're not gonna have someone on staff with that type of expertise. So like a a permanent. Like a strategic permanent plan to sort of improve overall lighting in the park. In my opinion, is something that might be much more doable. I I don't know. Again, I don't want to spend too much time on this. I just wanted more clarity on what you were thinking, just so I can think about it more, too.
Yeah, yeah, I I agree with what you're saying. Well, I I just thought. Um, it struck me that the the lighting for the sculptures look hacky, and and I thought we could do a lot better. That was all.
Point taken. Um, Michelle, do you you have a comment before Commissioner Roberts?
No, I'll do it after.
All right, Commissioner Roberts.
Well, um, one is, um, I'm looking at, and I don't have the page number, but it's project two oh nine, but it's two point oh nine, and it's the. Grandview Commons connector to the trail. And the way that is drawn, it. It the point where it connects is um at sort of right at the, you know, kind of at the foot where the parking lot is and the foot of um. You know, uh, with it. Uh, you know, the trailhead um next to the parking lot and uh you're right up from the um graveyard. And if you look at the line, it's, there's a, it get, it comes really close to the new new, you know, products, you know, phase two. That's already been built. Far short of that, and it just seems to me it's sort of inefficient. To have that much additional, this is on, I found it now, it's page um. Uh, three twenty-three, and it's just, it's just inefficient. I mean, you're just tacking on all this trail, and it looks like the. The line was drawn, the the trail was designed or, you know, uh, when before phase two was done, but it's done. And there's this place where they come really close to each other and just cut over to the phase two, and. You don't have to build the rest of that. So I I just, I think that's something. That we should think about. The um, the other, another one is um that is um. Three eleven, and I wish I'd written the pages down, three point, you know, three point eleven, and that's the. Um, and I had this problem last year where I was too tired to bring it up. Um, because it was so late at night, but it's the sidewalk near Dan Dan Holey, and I think it's designed. To kind of connect um.
That gets on page forty, or no, page, sorry, three forty-two.
And it looks to me, it looked like this last year, and it looks like it to me this year. It's a, it's the side to nowhere. I can't figure out. Where it goes that is going to be of any value to anybody. It's supposed to connect, I think, you know, the Hilltop Apartments down so they can kind of plug into the. Sidewalk system for um Walkabout Creek, but it's. That 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 isn't going anywhere either. Um, and so, you know, because you still have to, it's quite a height. Where you really get to sidewalk safe on Baker. So.
It does, you you're right. I mean, it connects to, you're right, at the at um. At Walkabout Creek, it kind of stops, but going um the other direction, it goes all the way past, um, it goes all the way to Dexter. Um, Ann Arbor Road to the shopping center, so across that side of Dan Hoi.
Oh, red squiggle. Hey, it's just this little squeak, squilly line.
Yeah, that little squiggle is probably part of the, yeah, I guess I don't understand what exactly the this.
Squiggle was it.
But that so whole sidewalk is gonna connect all the way then, basically all the way from uh Dexter and Arbor Road along Dan Hoi, that side all the way to. Walkabout Creek, but I don't think we can get the easement to the walkabout.
And that should be in the plan somewhere, and it isn't, so. I mean, it may be. So somebody's discussion, but this is the place to put it then, if that's the intention. And um, and it isn't there. So that was a comment, and then I I did think we could. Take the money we would save by only putting sidewalks on one side of the road. Instead of two, and use it for Tom's lighting plan. Because, you know, I was looking at where we're, there are a couple of places like uh Edison on um. You know, Edison on my side of the of Main Street. And there's nothing there, and now we're gonna put sidewalks on both sides. One side would do the trick. I mean, that's really all we need, and. It just, it it, I I think it it's it's spending money that. We really don't need to spend. They said would be my philosophy on that. And then uh the last thing is there's discussion of this. Streetscape on Second Street, and one one more specific project is putting sidewalks on Second Street. Which are very much needed. I mean, just on one side, they've got to have them. It's a, it's a. It's a treacherous, it's charming. But it's treacherous, and people walk in the street all the time, and there are a couple of blind spots there because of the way the hills kind of dip, and it. And during the snow, it's just asking for it, and there's a surprising amount of traffic on that street. You know, I walk there a lot with the dog, and I'm just shocked. Because I've served like, oh, it looks like a country road, and it's taking all this traffic. Um, it it's, I think it's some of it is, you know, peeling off the, you know, where mass comes into. Um, into the city, and and then some of the, I, some of it's just the the neighborhood that's up at the top, and they're dropping down to. Central, but anyway, there's a lot of traffic there, and it's just, it's really not a safe place to walk.
At a second street.
So, yeah. So anyway, that those are my comments.
Okay, thank you. And I have um one comment also to read in from Michelle. It was in response to the uh. One item that you pointed out about the uh connection to the park, the trailway there. And I do remember the Grandview Commons. Oh, there's two. Oh, yeah, there's a comment above it. Okay. Yep, the, well, first, the Grandview Commons connection, that one that you had mentioned next to the phase two, that is required as part of. It's part of the PUD and is required. It was done before the connection to Baker Road. I I specifically remember that because I think I helped request that, so um, so that was as part of that PUD. Um, and the the comment above that is, um, again, it goes to the uh. The point of about who can add and remove projects. The planning commission can request a project to be removed, so can staff. City Council or the staff or commission that created the project. Exactly. So that kind of goes back to a couple of comments before that. Thank you, Michelle, for.
The project that Tom is requesting. I mean, uh, Jim is requesting.
Correct. Um, okay, so uh, I believe uh. I'll go to, I'm sorry, Karen, uh, was that?
We should do that tonight.
Um, what, oh, what took her hand?
No, I didn't mean to shake her my hand down. I guess I'm. I just wanted to respond to a couple of things Karen was saying, and staff, please correct me if I'm wrong or expand. If it needs to be expanded. Um, with regard to the sidewalks. Um, Karen, I think you and I must live in the same general, like, two blocks. But yeah, so on Edison, we've talked about that in council work session, and. You know, I think like pave or putting sidewalks in everywhere is is a very, very long term goal, but I don't think it's something that's ever intended to. You know, put in on both sides of Edison and spend all the money right there at once. And then with regard to Second Street, that's something we're actively discussing, and I also walk my dog on that street and agree with everything you're saying. Um, and that uh Second Street has some of the oldest water main in the city, so that is a high priority. That is that that we're we're gonna fix, and as a part of that project. The sidewalk is like, I mean, it's, there's gonna be a sidewalk on one side.
Which side?
Uh, they're calling it the west side, so I think that's the non-industrial side, correct?
Yes. Just as as a start, like you mentioned. It's being timed on the that side of the street with the water main project, and then the. Sidewalk on the other side and other streetscape improvements will be for future consideration. Um, which is what this uh the new planning project would identify.
And Michelle or Mike, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, but it's as those properties on the other side, the, I guess we'd say the east side. Would redevelop, wouldn't they be required if and when they redevelop to put sidewalks in their frontage? I mean, that's part of our code. Yeah, I said, Michelle, yawn or yawning, I mean, nodding. Um, so, yeah, they would be required as part of our code to put in a sidewalk, so. Um. Again, whether it's not, but I know that's a pretty heavily traveled section of. City in that area, so we may end up with both sides there, at least piecemeal to begin with. So, um. Okay, I don't see it. Other hand, oh, there we go. Yes, Commissioner L.
Got a couple of things. Um, one, I agree wholeheartedly with Jim Cardy and the community park over there. Number two, I disagree, Karen, to a certain extent. I'm a runner, and I've. I've been on every one of these streets in town and run on every one of them, and um. Boy, it's a, it's a bit of a hassle when you're running down a sidewalk and it ends at a street. And there's traffic, and you've got to go to the other side of the street or run in the street, which I don't particularly mind. But the convenience of uh sidewalks on both sides of the street. Um. I think is an important issue, and if if it's over, you know, as long as it's strung out over time, that it isn't a huge. Outlay all at once, um, I think it's important. In fact, I have not been on a street where I've. Come across that that I hadn't said to myself, well, I wish there's a sidewalk here. Uh, I can see in some cases where it's very difficult to do that, but. Um. I I myself personally, I support the idea of the of the sidewalk program. Um. The uh, the other thing I had was uh First Street Park, Horseshoe Park. Very, very few people know that that park is there. Um, or use it even. Um, I. I for one think something ought to be done in that regard. The entrance to it, how it's used, there's quite a bit of land there. And I know the horseshoe folks are pretty protective of how that park gets developed. Um, I know a couple of them, but at the same time, if that's a park, and people don't even know it's a park, and it can hardly be used as a park. Uh, I think that's a shame. Um, so I think I don't know what kind of planning's been done, but I do think. Um, something, some planning should be done to make that part more recognizable and more usable, if it's gonna be a park at all.
Agree. I think we've mentioned that previously as a commission, actually, when that comes up on the CIP. Um, Michelle. Maybe she's typing something for me to add, and then I know uh. Actually, uh, Commissioner Marsh and then Cardy. Uh, Kyle?
Thanks, Brad. Yeah, I would like to weigh in on the sidewalk question, too. I guess we're all gonna say something. Um. I think a a one side first uh approach would be better than a. Than anything. I mean, especially Second Street. I guess maybe there's something in the works, but. Yeah, that's a bad one. You can walk down those little streets and, you know, you really have to turn around, or I guess you can walk over on the parking lot at a dare. And kind of make your way down it, but that would be a nice street to have um. Sidewalks on. And another thing that I'm not sure everyone is aware of is that we have, even on the. Smaller, I would call them side streets, like take Edison, for example. I brought this up with my neighbors about having a sidewalk from that parking lot that is now gonna be the encore. Uh, oh, I mean, the playground that is now gonna be the encore playground. And just linking that to Fourth Street, what that would look like. I asked a couple of them, and and they said absolutely not. They don't want a sidewalk there. Well, why not? Well, we have this ninety-nine foot right of way policy where the sidewalk has to be at the right of way edge. And guess what? These people don't want a sidewalk there, and neither would I. So I think that that bears some visiting. Now, we have our larger streets, like the number of streets, first, second, third, fourth. But we have the smaller streets, too, which are never gonna be bigger, and these people are gonna fight tooth and nail against any kind of sidewalk. That's why we don't have them there. So maybe we should revisit that, and maybe it makes sense to have some kind of. I mean, does it make sense to have some kind of subcommittee about sidewalks? I hate to have another committee, but. It's just, it's a sensitive issue, and it's really a a trigger issue from what I've seen from my neighbors and and casual discussions.
Yes, thank you. I'll just add, and I know Commissioner Cardy, I will just add to that, Kyle. I understand completely, and I'm very sensitive to that issue, believe me. I know sidewalks, and my house is one of those that sits about eight feet from the ninety-nine foot edge of the right of way. So when they're going to put. Sidewalks on the one side of Grand, that sidewalk would probably be about two feet from the front of my house, if it was a foot off the right of way, so. I mean, so I understand that, but I, but we have had flexibility. It's the same way across the street. That sidewalk is not at the right of way line, and I remember.
Uh, that's not a bad spot for a sidewalk where that one is.
Right, exactly. So I, there is flexibility now with the sidewalk placement. I know that, um, because we do have these extremely large right of ways. So, and I know on Edison, that was up ten years ago or so. There was a big battle over the sidewalks there that, again, they were going to be a foot off the right of way, so. There is flexibility on that, and I I couldn't agree more because it's not, I'm not gonna have a boulevard down Grand, so we don't need a ninety-nine foot.
And here I was, the new guy in the neighborhood, just kind of waltzing into this. I'm like, oh, we should have a sidewalk. They're like, no, no, no.
Better ways of design. We're not stuck to that standard anymore, so I I can assure you of that because I was very attuned to that subject. Um. So I I on a one more thing, I just wanted to go back because Michelle did make the comment that um. About Horseshoe Park that Mr. Hill had brought up, which regarding there is, there was a plan for the park, there is a plan, that we applied for a grant, but did not get it. So, because again, I do remember this coming up with the CIPs quite frequently on our discussions that there's no way that. And it's a, it's a community park. It's not just Horseshoe Park. It's a, it's. And obviously, you've been back there. I've been back there, too. There's not more, it's not a bad location kind of back there, but it's it's horseshoes, so. Yes, I, and I think Parks is aware of our comments on that as well. Um. So I think Commissioner Cardy and I, did you have your hand up earlier, I think, and then took it down? I might have missed it, but.
No, I just took it down for convenience. The interesting thing about Horseshoe Park is you say it's a community park, it's not just a horseshoe park. There are certain people in our community who disagree. And I was, I wanted to warn you, Chet, touching the horseshoe park issue is like the equivalence of immigration reform in China.
Quite like that, but.
Somewhere in Dexter, Paul Cousins, Paul Cousins is getting on his.
I do know Paul Cousins well.
Preparing to do battle with us just for suggesting that it is for more than a horseshoe park, so brace yourself.
Yeah. Yeah.
Touching on one more. Touching on one more issue. I, I have to say, I think the last people who should have a lot of input on sidewalks are the people who live on the street. And that may sound weird, but our role here is to develop the city of Dexter for the long term. And for, if we decide, and, and I'm not saying we should or shouldn't, but if we decide we want sidewalks on both sides of the street in all of the city of Dexter, we should have good, long-term reasons for doing that. That frankly should not be subject to a lot of lobbying by individual people on individual streets. That's the idea of planning. The idea of planning is to, to have a long-term vision for the community we're trying to develop. And sometimes, community impacted in, input is very important and needs to shape our projects. But other times, our challenge here is to stand up to short-term thinking and lead the way. And, and I think sidewalks is always a really great example of that. Because they bring accessibility to our community that is generally good for the community. People with strollers, people with wheelchairs, runners who do not want to be in a busy street. And surveys generally show the communities with sidewalks are considered more walkable and more desirable. I don't think that in every instance, we need to have sidewalks on both sides of the street. But I think there are, I think generally, it's a good practice. And I agree with Chet. I think that, you know, we need to look at this from the perspective of multiple aspects of the community, like runners, for example. Like, again, moms with strollers, like, again, our residents who are in wheelchairs. And sort of take a leadership role with that sometimes. So that's all I wanted to add.
Thank, thank you, Jim. Commissioner Phillips?
Yeah, I, I generally agree with Jim. I just, I just think that in our leadership role, we've got to use some common sense, too. That I think it's always a mistake to take a one-size-fits-all attitude towards everything. An example of that would be the sidewalk along Meadowview near the, that first cul-de-sac there. Where, you know, the, the community's performed fine for 20 years and then somebody thinks we, we need to have a sidewalk there out of the blue. And the neighbors don't want it, nobody cares about it, nobody's asked for it that I'm aware of. And again, to me, it's just more kind of a a dogmatic view to planning that I don't think we need. I, I think that accessibility is one thing, but getting carried away with it, I think, is a mistake. And I think community park is, the more community park paving is another example of a mistake. To Jim's earlier point. Thank you.
And Tom, I just want to add, I do, I agree with you. We should not have a one-size-fits-all, generally.
Right. Okay, uh, yes, Commissioner Wise. Oh, you're muted. Oh, you're still muted.
You're muted.
I'm sorry about that. So I guess, I guess the question that I'm having is talking about the park that Jim is talking about with the, the side, the circle in the park. How do we go about recommending that this gets taken out, taken out of the SIP program?
Sure. So the, the commission could move to remove or amend any project. I'd have to look back at community park. I think there was a note in there about bathrooms. Could move to approve the plan and remove everything. But I think there was still support for the addition of bathrooms at that park perhaps. So that, that would be a place to at least identify that component of the a project for that park in the plan. But I am with, again, if, if you wanted to remove the, the additional trail. As far as the lighting is concerned, I think that, that either could take the form of a, of a parks improvement project. It could also be a, a DDA economic development, a promotional thing that might not necessarily be included in the CIP. It's again, just how you wanted to finish. Regarding Dan Hoy, that, that, so those for, for reference, that the segments of sidewalks shown in, in the CIP project were identified in the master plan. I'm seeing in the, the non-motorized pass, pathway map, there was intended to be sidewalk on both sides of the road extending to Dangara. And then on the opposite side of the road to be immediately across from Dangara Drive. So I wasn't here for when that conversation happened, but at some point, there was discussion about that and that's what was selected. But sorry, to answer your question, Dustin, yes, the CIP, the commission can, can propose to remove or amend any, any project.
So we can, so again, we could take that if, going back, flipping back through my notes here to see the who had moved, but if whoever moves in, and again, the support, we, we could initiate that as an amendment to that motion to remove that part. But I think, again, we want to be specific. Is, does anybody have that in our packet here? I'm trying to look for that to make sure that we reference the correct. If that is something that somebody would like to propose, then we would have to, again, put that up for revote. And I see Michelle has a hand up.
I made a comment.
Oh, I don't see yet. Yeah. Oh, here we go. What Mike said about approving the CIP with the loop out of the community park, but understand that council doesn't have to accept and can put it back in. Correct. So we can make, like all of ours, we're making recommendations. And maybe that was what happened previously, Michelle.
Yes, yes.
Because I do remember Jim Carty's correct. We've discussed this previously and I thought we were all kind of on the same. So again, we're recommending by, so commission, or sorry, council can add that back in. And that's, sounds like what that, what happened last year. But we still have the ability to recommend the plan without that in there.
So Ed, yes, at, at some point, we'll reapply.
For, are you saying for the?
For grants for First Street.
Or for, for the, what, horseshoe park? Okay. Okay, so with that, I mean, we, we're still in discussion, but I wanted to.
We need to decide if you want to do the public hearing next month.
Yes, and I wanted, I, sorry, I lost my note where I put who, who made the motion and who supported it.
Nobody has yet.
Here, oh, that's why I don't have it. Okay, so with, again, so we brought up some issues of concern here. Some of those are for a little bit longer term discussion. I mean, the sidewalk is, is a great question. And again, I'm a very, I, I know, I'm afraid, I know all these sidewalks. And I agree that sidewalks don't necessarily go everywhere, although I want, I want to encourage them as much as possible, but there may be an opportunity to, I mean, again, whether or not we just pick and choose individual sidewalks is to add, we're doing a traffic study. If there's some kind of, and I brought up something similar before, is kind of a pedestrian type study along with that, to see where people are really walking in, in, in what they're using. I mean, I don't think that's a, we can have ones that aren't very involved. I, I know, because again, some of these, and I'm sure the runners or walkers here can identify ones that we know people use. And then, like, again, the one on Meadowview, I agree, I think Tom had just mentioned that. That it, I've walked by that a hundred, 200 times, probably. And it, yeah, there's one right on the, that one doesn't really connect necessarily anything. But there are others that are really important. So I think the sidewalk is a, it's a great question because we have lots of good opinions in the city about that. And about placement as well, I mean, placement on your property, as well as placement ultimately in the village, which side or city, which side needs two sidewalks on both sides. So maybe that's something we can roll into a further study. Now, having said that, we do have the CIP, again, put before us, there is one, kind of one concern brought up more strongly about removing a project. I know Commissioner Phillips brought up also, again, about the additional lighting. I think maybe, again, if you want to introduce that, but also that may be a point of concern that the Parks Commission, I mean, or the DDA can, I don't know if that would rise to a CIP project necessarily, given the amount. But I think it's something that's worth mentioning as we go through this. So with that, again, do we, we can set a public hearing. We, we've offered some feedback to staff. We can see it again at the April meeting. But if anybody feels comfortable, we can make a motion and, and set a public hearing. We do also get an opportunity, again, to, for feedback at the public hearing. It doesn't mean that just because we set a public hearing, we have to vote to approve it that night. But we will get public input on it. Okay, so with that, I see Commissioner Roberts raising her hands. You have a question?
Question about the community park. I, I, since I don't live over there, I don't really know it at all. But would, would just move, you know, moving to eliminate the path, be satisfactory, I mean, is, is the, is the rest of the stuff a good idea? The bathrooms, the shade trees, the water fountain and that stuff? Or is that not a good idea?
I think so. Commissioner Carty and Phillips.
Yeah, my only, my only problem is with the path. Which, which is why in the past, I've asked staff to bring this to the Parks Commission and have them change it. That hasn't happened. I mean, I've been talking about this for years.
Well, we can try, I mean.
I think we have taken it. The Park and Rec Commission respectfully declined to honor the planning commission's request.
So Jim, perhaps, yeah, it may be worth it to express some of your concerns directly to the Parks Commission.
I think we should just take it out. I think we should just take the path out.
We, we can absolutely, like, we, we can vote. I mean, again, if that's part of, when we make the motions at the public hearing, we can absolutely set to remove that path. Just make sure, again, that we're specific to that path, if that's the only issue. But I mean, we.
I'll offer a motion to set the public hearing with the amendment that the path will be removed from that project.
Well, what number? We should reference the specific project number, at least. I don't.
We know which one it is, and so we can fix the motion with Carol.
I had it up in front of me and now I don't, so I apologize.
Okay, no, that's okay.
2.01.
You're on the line.
2.01.
Okay, so for this is community park. Roberts, I, oh, sorry. Sorry, so Commissioner Carty made a motion to set the public hearing with the removal of kind of a partial circular path around Community Park. So Commissioner Wise had seconded that. So now we will be in discussion and Commissioner Roberts, you have your hand up?
No, that was it. I, I, that, I forgot to take it down, sorry.
No problem. So did I see another hand up? No. So if everybody's clear, we would, at this time, we'd be setting the public hearing for my April, April 4th.
April 5th.
April 5th, okay. Any additional other, additional concerns? Again, not our last opportunity. If you see anything in the meantime, you can always communicate that to staff as well. So seeing no other hands up or concerns, I think that, I'm not missing anything in the chat. Nope. So, okay, with that, I guess, Carol, if you're ready, we could have a, a roll call vote, please, to set the public hearing for the capital improvements plan?
Okay, I had to change to my cell phone because I lost the internet for a while. Hopefully you can hear me. Okay. So, we'll be, roll call, Roberts?
Yes.
Wise?
Yes.
Carty?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Kowalski?
Yes. Okay, thank you all very much. Lots of good feedback. So we'll see this for our public hearing on April 5th. Okay, so moving along, the next item for new business on the agenda is the text amendment to the accessory dwelling units. So very exciting one. And I believe, Michelle, like, is Mike going to do the presentation, I thought? But you have your hand up, Michelle.
I received a message from a Renee Reeves asking about an update on a dealership going out on Dexter Town Hall in North Territorial. That's not in the city of Dexter. And so there's nothing we can provide.
Okay, thank, thank you, Michelle. So that was in, I didn't see that, was that in a different?
It came directly to me.
Oh, okay. All right. Thank you for addressing that, though, Michelle.
Sounds awful.
With that, the, so we'll have the ADU discussion. I believe Mike is going to start that out?
Yes, yep. So Michelle drafted a framework for potential accessory dwelling unit provisions and memo that's included in your packet. And it was drafted using a combination of model codes and requirements from other communities, including Ann Arbor. And there's a wide variety of different ways to regulate accessory dwelling units. So this was meant to be an educated guess about what could work in Dexter based on the commission, feedback that the commissions provided so far. And so what we, what staff were asking tonight is feedback about each component of what's included in the memo that we can then use to go on and draft an actual text on that. So, and then depending on that, in addition to that feedback, the other question is if we're ready to go ahead and schedule a public hearing for text amendments on April 5th, or if we'd like to see a draft before we proceed with scheduling that public hearing. So to briefly summarize the, what the memo in your packet, the first component is, would be the intent section of the ordinance. Be an important foundation for the provisions and is important for defensibility. The, what's included in the draft are objectives identified by the Housing Pass Force and the master plan, as well as the needs that have been discussed at previous commission meetings. So to summarize the proposed ADU regulations. Let, just a moment. Okay, so the the definitions as they're proposed envision three different types of, oh, so, sorry. So the definition for an accessory dwelling unit would be a, a, a single-family occupied space that has a kitchen and a, and a bathroom. And then it, it goes on to define with diagrams, three different types of accessory dwelling units. They're on, page 388 of the packet. Just to make very clear the different formats that these kind of structures could take. And then regarding eligibility and application requirements, then general provisions. Accessory dwelling units should be permitted on any parcel of a single-family dwelling. Either the ADU itself or the, or the principal dwelling must be occupied by an owner, the owner of the property. A zoning compliance permit would be required and would need to be renewed every five years. In the event that there's no complaints associated with the property, then that would waive that renewal requirement. Upon submission of an application, the city would have to send a, a notice that an application was submitted for an accessory dwelling unit to all properties within 300 feet. The accessory dwelling unit could not be used as a short-term rental. For detached accessory dwelling units, the city, the zoning ordinance currently allows two accessory structures. This framework envisions accessory dwellings to be permitted essentially as a third accessory structure. In other words, those two other accessory structures, one under 100 square feet and one greater would also be allowed in addition to. Regarding legal non-conformities or non-conformities. Not, so this framework proposes that a non-conforming structure could be used as an accessory dwelling unit if it's a legal non-conformity. However, if it is greater than 200 square feet in area, it would need to be modified to be in compliance with the ordinance. And I believe there was a typo on page 390. It should say that legally non-conforming structures have to be modified if they're greater than 200 square feet in order to be in compliance. The framework also proposes some alternate lot coverage requirements. ADUs can only be permitted on a lot that's greater than 5,000 square feet. Michelle included, there's, there's only two residential lots in the city that are under 5,000 square feet. So those would be the only exceptions. There are maximum allowable gross floor area requirements for ADUs, depending on zoning district. And there are also corresponding lot coverage requirements. The idea being for allowing more living space, there should be some adjustments to lot coverage to, to accommodate that in cases where accessory dwelling units are permitted. And then lastly, the ordinance would not require separate utility services for the ADU. They could use the, they could be connected to the house and would not require a separate tap. So again, this is preliminary, meant to be for, for discussion and any and all feedback. So please. Um, so again, um, this is preliminary meant to be, uh, for, for discussion and any and all feedback, so please, uh, let us know what suggestions you have, and we'll decide afterwards if we're ready to schedule a public hearing or. Michelle, is there, well, anything to add, or?
Right now.
Okay, um, all right, um, sorry, did I cut you off, Mike? Were you still?
No, nope, that's it.
Okay, um, with that, I saw, oh, I thought I saw a hand up. Oh, there you go, Kyle, uh, so, okay, really briefly then, I guess, yeah, well, we're in the full discussion here, and as Mike said, that, um, we can choose to set a public hearing for this, uh, for next month. We can also bring it back for additional discussion after sta- after our input and the staff makes any revisions. Uh, so with that, I guess I'll start off, uh, Kyle Marsh, you have your hand up, please?
Thank you. Yeah, I would just like to say, uh, Mike, I think you did a great job on this.
Oh, thank you, Mi- Michelle did, Michelle did draft.
Michelle, too, oh, Michelle. Um, yeah, it's definitely consistent with what I've seen, um, with Ann Arbor and some of the surrounding areas, so. I may have a suggestion or two, but I think it's really, really, um, I think you kind of covered a lot of all the items.
Yeah, thanks, Kyle. Yeah, absolutely. Well, more discussion, uh, Commissioner Roberts?
Um, the, um, I'm on page three ninety-two, it's the height. And it's gonna be raised, to the, uh, can be raised to sixteen feet. If, if, does that include if somebody wants to build a garage with a dwelling on, over it? Cause that's a pretty low ceiling.
It's actually gonna be a question of mine, and I was looking for some of our architect friends, the sixteen feet, I don't know that you can get two stories.
Well, you're not getting, you're not getting two full stories, you're getting a story and a half.
So it'd be kind of like a slope, like you'd get?
Correct, it's a story and a half, not a full two-story building. That wasn't the intent, um, you obviously can change that if you want. Um, but sixteen feet is the standard, as I understand it, for a, a story and a half structure.
I, I would, this is Tom, I was, uh, oh, I should raise my hand, and. You're muted, Matt.
Oh, sorry, we'll let you jump the line this time, and then Commissioner Cardy.
Oh, thank you, sorry about that, Jim. Uh, just real quick, uh, we should, we should go by stories then. Uh, we should say a story and a half then, we shouldn't tell somebody how high they can make their, their ceiling, that's, that's not our place.
But would that be hard? The only question follow-up really quick, would that be hard? Is there a way to, I always look for, again, cause I see how people can, like, get around these things. Would that be easy enough for you guys, Michelle, Mike, to, I mean, can they come in with a story and a half that's fifty feet tall?
How can it be a height limit?
Of the, yeah, okay, then.
But, you know, some people like to have ten-foot ceilings, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to tell somebody, no, you can't have a ten-foot ceiling, cause Planning Commission decided sixteen feet's enough. That's not a good.
Then ask my question on the, Michelle, how would, it, the limit's still sixteen?
So how tall do you want a potential story and a half if it's a detached garage with that unit above it?
So that's my.
I would define story and a half, I wouldn't worry about how high it is.
But I don't know, Tom, cause then could you come in with somebody with a forty-foot high garage, if that's something a story and a half?
Well, uh, residential's already regulated by zoning.
What is the height? Well, let's get back, there's a lot of hands going up, so let's, okay, so point of, of regarding the height, we need to follow up on that, Commissioner Cardy?
Yeah, I don't know what the solution to the problem is, but I don't think sixteen feet or a story and a half, however you want to put it, is enough. I don't think it's appropriate. Part of what we're trying to do here is allow people to do things like build an apartment above a garage, and sixteen feet just is not appropriate for that.
I feel a disheart, so feedback again regarding the height, and Megan, did you want to add something regarding that, or?
Yes, yeah, I, I would think it would be important also to maintain the context of the neighborhood and what you already have in place for the principal structure. Um, so if you were going to establish a height limit, um, that was very basic, I would say that, that accessory building couldn't exceed the height of the principal building, whatever those regulations are. Um, I do believe you do have a height regulation for the principal building.
We do.
Well, I also want to say, like, that's how these types of changes get bogged down. Like, we start worrying about changing the character of the neighborhood. Megan, that's exactly what I'm not trying to do, and I want to say I'm completely opposed to that. Like, if we wanted to do that, we wouldn't be approving accessory dwellings, like. So, uh, I, I reject that, I just, you know, perf- respectfully.
Yeah, yeah, so, um, it's just that you, you have regulations in there for the, for the principal dwelling. Um, and so there's a height limit there, and so then a choice would be, does that accessory dwelling unit, or if it's a detached unit, is that allowed to be higher than the maximum of the principal building? Um, because when you don't have something, if it's a story and a half, it's gonna be the odd character. But there could be violations, and then you have a hard time dealing with it at that time, time, and I know, you know.
I'm not, I just want to be clear, I'm not saying they shouldn't have to follow whatever codes and laws we have. I just hate that phrase, like, character of the neighborhood, like, that, that's not, I mean, if we wanted to do that, we wouldn't make any changes.
Not precise, okay.
No, thanks.
Yep, no, so Megan, do you have additional?
Nope.
Why? Okay, so, well, we, we got more hands, all right, all kinds of hands, Michelle. Um, are you typing, or are you gonna comment?
I'll comment, I'll make it easier. So if you look at both of those, the attached and the detached, um, the attached one is fine, cause it's already tied to not exceeding the height of the principal structure. I can take out the mention regarding the sixteen feet. Um, and just identify that a detached structure can't exceed the height of the single-family dwelling to which it's the accessory. So just keep that last line and get rid of the rest of it. Does that make sense?
I mean, I think so, I mean, there. Okay, okay, so let's get through, I got some additional, I think, um, Commissioner Hubbard first, and then we'll go to Marsh and then Phillips, so Commissioner Hubbard.
Okay, thanks. I think some of what I was gonna ask got answered in there by Megan and, and just Michelle, too. But like, anecdotally for me, because I don't know the ins and outs of the code yet, um, there was that garage that was built around the corner from me on, oh, what is it, Fifth, on the alley? And it's very tall and very large, but I think what I'm sort of sussing out right now is that it's the height of the principal dwelling. So I guess I'm sort of on this same page, like, with others saying, I mean, if we're gonna allow that to be that large, how can we, if it's in line with the principal dwelling, how can we regulate by height? Does that make, am I making sense?
That was, that's what's key, and why they were able to do that. And then, then you can go times the house.
Wait, it's connected? Okay, sorry.
Okay, so, so connected, you can go the height of the house, it's not actually detached at that point, so.
Realize it was deeply attached.
So, okay.
But even detached wouldn't go higher than whatever that principal structure was. Cause if you only have a one-story
Right.
principal structure, why would you have a two-story garage? Unless that's something you want to allow.
I don't mean to create a conversation where we don't need one, I really didn't realize, in my mind, that, in my mind, that was detached.
No, you're fine, wow.
Conversation, okay, uh, Commissioner Marsh?
Sure, okay, um, yeah, this is a tough call, because you don't, I mean, if the house has an upright structure and a character to it, you know, and if you're trying to design something that goes with the house, the last thing you want to have to do is do this kind of flat, flattened-out looking ADU. You know, you may want to pull off of that vertical, you know, character that the house has. So I think sixteen's getting a little low, I mean, our, just for reference, I think our district allows thirty-five for the house, is that, am I mistaken there?
Kyle, I'm gonna remove that sentence, so that number isn't there anymore.
Oh, okay, but I mean, does that mean it goes back to fourteen, or can it just?
No, it'll just, for a detached structure, it'll just say, at no time shall the detached ADU exceed the height of the single-family dwelling to which it's an accessory.
And, and I think that that's, I think we're getting there. Um, the only thing I could see is that, let's say somebody has a ranch, and then they want to build this, you know, new garage with a little apartment above it, so they could live there while they're, you know, renovating their ranch and, and adding another story to it or something. Yeah.
Well, that's a different, that's a different thing, though. You've got two things tied together, this ordinance would allow something like that. The question that you all have to determine is, is are you going to be okay with a two-story garage and a single-story principal structure?
I don't know yet.
The way it is, and you can decide if, um, if you want this to come back to you very formalized in a draft, or, or if you're ready for it to be public hearing. And again, come back in a formalized, um, format.
Okay, Commissioner Phillips?
Yeah, I, I agree with Michelle, I think it's obvious that the principal structure shouldn't be exceeded. Um, I can't imagine that, uh, it would look anything but weird, if, if you had a little one-story house and in the back was a new two-story, uh, uh, house that was, uh, twice its height. I think that would be, uh, kind of, uh, uh, that would be weird. We'd get a, I, we'd get a lot of questions about that, and I think rightly so. And I, I think, you know, if we wanted to have some, some language in there where we could give, give the Planning Commission the authority to exceed the height under, you know, circumstances that we determine appropriate, to, to Kyle's point, we'll offer creativity, that wouldn't bother me. Um, but, uh, absent that, I think it's a no-brainer that, uh, that the principal structure has to govern the total height.
Thank you, Tom, so we're hearing, um, so it sounds like we've kind of come around, at least on the height issue, and, and I, 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 I agree, I mean, about the sixteen, matching the height of the principal structure, I think that that kind of makes sense, and obviously keeping it lower when the, when the primary house is lower. That's the point of an accessory unit, so I think, so we've heard some support from that, that idea about kind of, so the way Michelle would word it is just basically taking out the, uh, height, where it's at sixteen, I'm losing my track here, yeah, uh, basically sixteen feet. To just have it matched, it cannot be higher than the principal structure. So, um, it, right, basically on that, can we see, is there, if somebody else wants to comment on that, does anybody have a problem with that? Okay, Miss Commissioner Hill?
Well, what we're talking about here is, is in relation, is, um, response to the images that basically that you've provided, but what about a big grade differential? There's a number of lots in the city where the house is high logically. And, uh, if I were to put my accessory building more than that, I could, if, if we just use it, if, and I don't know how to solve this, but if we use that reference, what do you do in that case? Where you might be able to put a three-story building next to your house. Um, if the grade allowed it, if you look at the house, uh, that's been renovated at the corner of Broad and, uh, what is it, their second, uh, no, third? Um, they've got a huge grade change in the side of their yard, so how do you address that?
You're gonna, you're still gonna put, um, in addition to the comment about not exceeding the principal structure, you're gonna tie it back to the maximum height within that zoning district, so that's gonna go back to, um, the schedule of ranks.
And that's a distinct way of how do you measure those heights for the, for the building, correct, from finished grade and things, cause I know from working in Ann Arbor, that's a big issue with the hills and the slopes and the walkouts, so, but that's a great point. Um, Commissioner Hill, about the height?
I've, I've got, I've got another couple of questions, clarification things. Under, um, on page three ninety, short-term rentals, does it define anywhere what that is? In other words, my short term is the same as somebody else's?
Our short-term rental ordinance is defined very specifically in the ordinance.
Okay, and my second question is, on page three ninety-one, the detached DU, um, ADU, the five-foot dimension, um, if it's not, as I say, if it's detached from side or rear lot line? That seems very light to me, is that standard?
Hold on just a second, you're talking about number five setbacks?
Yeah, five-foot, uh, um, setbacks, number five B.
Yes.
It's similar to our current, um, accessory detached accessory structure setback requirements. Those need to be setback three feet from any wall.
Okay.
I increased it the width of a sidewalk, basically.
Okay, yeah, okay.
I was gonna, do you have additional questions?
No, I don't.
I was gonna, and I know Commissioner Marsh, I'm, I know you have your hand up, but I wanted to kind of, cause one of my issues was regarding that, that, that setback, so, and I think it, it, it flips back to, on page three ninety, under development, right, of development regulations, it says conversion of an existing, and it says accessory dwelling unit, but I think that's probably supposed to be structure, right, conversion of an existing structure?
Yes, thank you.
And then, but, so there's this whole thing about conforming and non-conforming, and like, item B there, it says, the non-conforming that was constructed after December thir- three first, twenty twenty-one. But, non-conforming for what? Because you don't allow, you're not gonna allow someone to construct a non-conforming building.
Like some, like, people never do anything, they're not supposed to.
But, but nowadays, I mean, aren't we, I mean, I guess, it, it seems weird that we put that caveat in there, because if somebody builds it, or does that refer to the five feet? Like, if you build something at three feet, then it's not, like, I'm confused that we call out something specifically if people build their properties wrong, why would we say? I, I don't know what that's.
I can take it, I can take it out.
Well, I, I guess I don't know, I'm kind of confused between that and, and even, kind of.
I think it goes to the point that, of what it is you're trying to overall accomplish, allowing ADUs. And if somebody's done an accessory building, excuse me, um, without getting the proper permits, and all, and let's say somebody built an accessory structure, sold the property, and the new property owner comes in and wants to do an ADU. Well, they didn't create that, do we just automatically say, yep, no, can't do it, it's illegal, get rid of it? Or do you try and work with them to find a way to make it happen? And I think that's the, the premise of it. If, if, if in the end you don't want it, we take it out.
Yeah, no, I mean, I guess it doesn't, it, it's, I was kind of thinking a different way, and I was gonna relay that back to the five, so the five feet, and you said that detached building, cause right now you can have accessory structures three feet from the property line?
Correct.
So, and that's similar to, like, Ann Arbor, is the, is three feet, um, any accessory structure. And actually, just for reference for everybody, it's, it's three feet, um, twenty-one feet in height for accessory buildings. Um, and they can be three feet from the side of the rear property line, so, and again, as somebody who lives in an area that would could most likely be affected by this, and whose garage is less than three feet, but, um, I don't even.
That's why it, that's why it says modified or new.
So, do we, I guess the five feet, do we care, I mean, and again, do we want that five feet in there? Or can we just have three feet, does that make it easier?
Well, that's, that's a question for you all. It, I did the five feet, one, because it's the width of a sidewalk, and two, when the discussion of accessory dwelling units are, are allowed to be three feet currently, there was a little pushback from you.
Okay, and I didn't, I wasn't aware of that, so that's why I kind of questioned. Yep, okay, so that's, that's, that was kind of my question, I mean, again, I'm fine with that, but I look at, either way, I mean, I could see somebody look right out my window here, that could potentially put one up that's. could see somebody look right out my window here that could potentially put one up that's three feet, but I'm, I was okay with that, but I understand five feet is still, I'm still fine with five feet. Um, so that was my clarification question on that. Um, and then I, I have one other one, but I'll go to, cuz I know Commissioner Marsh and then Commissioner Wise.
No, Justin was waiting longer than.
Oh, you were, okay, thanks, Michelle. All right, Commissioner Wise, sorry. Oh, you're me, there you go. Oh, now you're back muted again.
You're, no.
Yeah, but, no.
There you go.
There you go.
I was one of the ones that wanted a little bit further distance for the five feet versus the three feet, just, just to put that out there, cuz I think that's a good idea, especially when you're putting an accessory dwelling with noise and stuff like that, so. I'm, I'm a fan of the five feet. And then, my other thing that I have is when we go to, it's page three ninety-one, um, going to the lot area size, so B right there, or greater than twelve thousand feet, is nine hundred and sixty square feet too big? So that's like saying if someone has twelve hundred and one square feet, they can build a nine hundred and sixty square foot building, but someone who has twelve hundred feet, exactly, could only build seven sixty, right?
Twelve thousand.
Yeah, twelve, twelve thousand, I'm sorry.
Twelve thousand or greater.
Nine sixty.
Nine sixty, less than twelve thousand, at, but, seven thousand eight hundred, seven hundred eighty. If somebody didn't like these, that's where they go to the ZBA.
Okay. I guess what I'm saying, the, the greater than twelve thousand square feet at nine hundred and sixty square feet, to me, I think that should be smaller. That's all I'm gonna say. I think, you know, because what, cuz if someone has less than twelve, so if you have eleven thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine, you can only build seven hundred and eighty square feet. But if you have twelve thousand and one, you could build a nine hundred and sixty square foot. I, I just think, I think that nine sixty should be nine hundred, just my opinion. I, I just wanna put that out there.
Yeah, and I mean, I think uh, I kind of agree with the, the nine sixty is a, is a challenge, I think I look, cuz I think, I believe my lot's over twelve thousand square feet, but my house is only slightly over a thousand, so. I think in a lot of the lots in the older part of the city are, are quite large. I mean, I have a very deep lot, so. I, I mean, I have pause about nine sixty, because again, that's, that's a pretty big structure. We're trying to go for accessory. I mean, I was going to reduce it to like, say, eight hundred for, you know, I, I, I don't know. So that was just my concern. I don't know its particular number, but I think nine sixty is rather large, when a lot of these houses in the older city are barely a thousand square feet, so. But anyway, that's, so I know Commissioner Marsh, I wanna follow up on that, that discussion, but Commissioner Marsh has had his hand up for a while.
Thanks. Um, I mean, I'd like to go on record saying that three feet is is enough for the side and the back setbacks. We may just wanna think about how far it is to a neighboring structure instead of to a property line. That seems to be a more useful measure to me. You know, it's three, but you gotta be ten from another house or, or something like that. And I don't see any of that in there. Um, the other thing is, the ten from the original, you know, the main house, to me is, you know, there's this gap, if I attach this garage to this house, which to me is an uglier option for design, then, you know, then I get to attach it and I can, you know, be, you know, further from, you know, I can get a bigger structure. But as soon as I move it off the house one foot, well, then I gotta move it ten feet. And to me, that's always been this thing where I'm like, what, what's going on here? I want this thing seven feet, or six or five, you know, and then actually that would let me move it away from that property a little bit more, you know, I've come to the the issue where it's like, wow, gotta be ten off the house, it could be this much off the property, and it's like, if I could only move it a little closer to the house, why then, then I could do a much nicer design. So I've been stymied by that, and I, I guess a little sore on it, but to me, it's always felt like, like why, ten feet from the house?
Fire safety.
Well, you have now the option to do fire-rated walls. That's regulated by the building code. I mean, there's no, it's not rocket science and it's perfectly doable.
I'm willing to take it to the fire department and champion it for last, if, if that's what planning commission.
Well, thank you. I mean, it's just, you know, that's one of those things, that, that ten foot, it's like, ah, we have the technology to fireproof things and so, there you go.
Thank you, Cap. No, very helpful. We'll have to come back. That's a follow-up discussion. We've heard some commenting less than ten feet, so uh, Commissioner Phillips, I think you were next, and then Commissioner Hillman.
Yeah, um, a couple of things. I don't know why we're, uh, we care that much again about how many square feet somebody can build. I think we need to regulate things like, we got, we gotta say, talk about height, setbacks, lot size, that kind of thing, and, and I I think micromanaging the square footage of somebody's uh, project is, is a, is a mistake. Other than if we wanna say, we wanna give it a minimum size, um, I would support that. And then, the other thing, I, I think three feet is uh, not wide enough. I don't know that you could even get a lawnmower through there. But I would say as little as four probably is. And then as far as the ten feet goes, I, I would, i- it shouldn't be a, a again, uh, it's, it, it's not something that should involve the fire marshal, it's something that involves the residential building code. Uh, as Kyle alluded to, that's all already taken care of. We, we don't need to re-regulate something, the building code already governs. And uh, opening something up to a fire marshal is a, I think, a mistake, so, that's my two cents. Thanks.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Tom.
So, if I can just address, Tom, the reason that there are maximum gross floor area is when this came in front of the planning commission originally, the uh, uh, the range was five hundred to twelve hundred were some of the examples. Planning commission was adamant that twelve, or the, most of the people on the commission um, were not comfortable with large ADUs um, at, at a thousand to twelve hundred feet. So I tried to keep them under.
I understand, but it seems to me that that should be scaled by the, the rest of other ordinance criteria like lot size. So if I have a fifty acres, who, who cares whether I have twelve hundred ADU or not?
We don't have fifty acres.
I know we don't, but uh, the point is the same. It, it should be regu- it should be scaled to the, to the project, not uh, in my opinion, a one-size-fits-all kind of thing.
Point taken, um.
So Karen Roberts has um, um, has left the meeting, uh, yeah, she's leaving, um, she broke her wrist, so.
Was it because of Matt?
No.
Wait, what? She broke, was sitting at the table just now, or, I mean, okay. Wow, Karen, okay. All right, well, we'll move on. So, let's see, uh, Commissioner Phillips, is that, if we're now Commissioner Marsh, I think your hand's still up? And then Commissioner Hubbard, I don't think we heard from you yet.
Oh, um, yeah, there's so much, just, we're all saying a lot of things right now. Tom, I wanna, I guess I'll start with you and work backwards. Um, I also do not appreciate micromanagement. Perhaps that's a side issue of my um, day job, but I agree that like the things you're talking about, like setbacks and the height and all that, that, that could dictate the square feet itself. Um, I also think the nine hundred and sixty square feet, if we're gonna say that that's gonna be able to be regulated by the ZBA, wouldn't it make more sense to allow it to be bigger? And that, um, sorry, I'm sorry, you guys. I've like lost my train of thought. There's so many of these things.
Lot going on.
Yeah, there is. Um, but yeah, if we're gonna allow the ZBA to regulate it.
Oh, let me, the, ZBA can only regulate based on a set of criteria uh, in law. So practical difficulties, extraordinary circumstances, things like that, dealing with a lot.
Okay, wait, okay, so what I, no, so I guess what I was thinking is like, if, if we scaled the nine sixty down, then if somebody wanted it to be bigger, then they could go to the ZBA and argue for that, correct?
Um, yeah.
But I, I think perhaps, uh, there are uh, provisions out there where if to, you know, in this case, exceed a certain area, that like, we could include a provision that could say that has to come to the planning commissioner, something like that, is.
Like if we're hung up on the difference between twelve thousand square feet and twelve thousand one square feet, there's so much more, well, I actually don't know how much more we have beyond twelve thousand square feet, but I agree with Matt that there's a lot of these um, lots in our area, the old village, where there's a lot of land and a very small house on it, so. I just think, I don't know, I, I, I'd like to see the nine sixty scaled down as well. Um, and then the five feet versus three thing, I think that the neighboring structure issue is um, interesting. I think that's um, a good thing to look at. I guess that's it.
Thank you, um. Yeah, um, that was a good point, actually, Kyle brought up that I didn't think, cuz I was struggling with that setback as well. I mean, I'm comfortable with the five, and as I mentioned, I was comfortable with three, but I think, i- if there's a way that, again, I don't wanna over, I don't know how, I mean, the, the separation from adjacent structures, I think, is a big one, cuz there are some.
Only if you've got adjacent structures.
Pardon?
Only if you've got adjacent structures in which to measure.
Right.
There's not gonna be a real clear standard there.
No, but I'm saying if there wa- I guess there, all right, I'm gonna pass on that one for now, um. I will say that I, I, I do, I feel pretty, and I know, Tom, you can virtually roll your eyes at me. Um, I know that, I'll disagree with Tom on that. I think that I, I'm a huge supporter of the ADUs, but the point is they're accessory dwelling units. I mean, I think if, if I were to put up a twelve hundred square foot ADU in my backyard, i- it's the size of my hea- I mean, if we wanna go that direction, then we will just say multifamily in all districts. But I think setbacks in lot coverage aren't going to, in height, there, I mean, I could fill up my whole back, so I really think, and again, I'm, I'm a pro, I think the nine sixty might be a little too big, because we're going for accessory. If you go around the existing city now, and the parts where this will be applied, it's not going to be applied in West Ridge or here on Farms, at least a detached one. I think you look at the structures that are here now, they are smaller, and I mean, we want accessibility and we want affordability. That's what we're going here for. So I think, again, I mean, I, I I'm a little, I mean, I think the nine sixty could be scaled down, but, and I, and again, I'll reference you, Tom, cuz I can't look at you and, but I'm saying like, and I know, like, you would roll your eyes again when I would come up, my, some of my concern was about the uh, like windows over adjacent property lines, like you have somebody looming over, but I know I could channel my inner architect there, Tom, saying we shouldn't be regulating windows on adjacent property, so, which I kind of agree, cuz you don't need, you know, you don't need a site plan or zoning to put in a window, so how are we gonna regulate that? So I've kind of been comfortable leaving that off, um, so.
How about if I just come back with a draft that changes based on the things you've talked about, and we won't worry about a public hearing yet?
Yeah, well, that's what I was probably gonna suggest. I think we've had enough to, to kind of chew on here that, and, and it's a pretty big issue. We're hearing a lot of good feedback, a couple of issues I haven't quite thought before, so, um. But, you know, and I, and, and I will add too, I mean, again, I, I, as I mentioned, I'm a proponent of the ADUs, but I think in, and looking in, as y'all probably know my day job in Ann Arbor, and I think that, right now, we're going through a loosening, really loosening, like, opening up, well, it's the proposal to for all ADUs in the city, basically, and I, and I think that even what we did previously up to this point has not resulted in an explosion of, of ADUs. I mean, it, it's fairly easy to get now with some zoning improve, approvals, but there is things about detached structures that we're getting rid of and and other things, so I think some of the, and, and this is also meant, obviously, for the public, so I think in general that we're, we seem to be supportive of a board, but that, obviously, Ann Arbor has different pressures than we have. Um, and it hasn't been a problem. I mean, there is a huge pushback. I was at many very long meetings about, you know, there's obviously different, uh, you know, students, priming sick students in the ADUs and and that this hasn't been an issue. We got rid of any occupancy requirement, I think that's self-governing, so. Yeah, anyway, those are just kind of my thoughts in, in a roundabout way, but I, I, I do think we've given enough feedback to Michelle that we probably, she could chew on, on some revisions and, and get us, get it back to us, um. But also I see, commit, wait, Commissioner Marsh just disappeared. I think he had his hand up. At least he disappeared on my screen.
I, I put it down.
Oh, okay, all right, sorry, did I talk through your point? Oh, is it back up? No, wait, you're, oh. I don't know if it's me, but you're moving all around on my screen.
Sorry about that.
All right, do you, you have a point though, or, or you?
Uh, my only, I guess, a mild point, it was in agreement, I forget who said it, but, you know, maybe if it gets bigger, that it becomes like a special use, you know, there's like an ADU up to this, and then you get bigger and it becomes a special use, which brings it back before us, you know?
I mean, I, I, I don't, my personal opinion, I think, I mean, we, we could, but I don't, I don't know that that's gonna, I don't know why we would even necessarily write something like that. They can always use, and we don't wanna use it as a ZBA to legislate, but I mean, if somebody has a great idea, I don't know how they could prove a hardship, though, to exceed the size.
No, I mean, it would be, it would be a special use, right, so it would come.
Right, but even, that would be, I don't know, um, well, thoughts additional?
At that point, at that point with special use, don't you, don't we have to, you know, look at architectural and other stuff like?
It becomes a full site plan, yeah.
Yeah, that's, I, I, but.
Isn't really affordable, but, you know.
Yeah, that, that throws that out, but. Okay, I'm done. Additional, Commissioner coming? Commissioner Hill, looks like you're ready to say, yep, I knew it.
Um, only one thing, really. There's an interesting article in today's M Live about this very topic, ADUs in Ann Arbor. Pull it up and take a look at it.
I saw that.
Yeah, so.
Interesting, yeah.
Send me the link, please.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, we gave lots of good feedback, I think, everybody. Any, um, anything else, additional, uh?
Yes, I have a, I, I actually do have another question. I'm raising my hand this way?
Yeah, that's fine, cuz I can see, right, that's even.
I don't have any buttons on the bottom of my screen that I can.
Oh, well, I see you when you're going like that, so that's.
Okay, so that's good enough.
That's perfect.
Okay.
Guys, everybody that's doing chat, please stop.
I don't see any chat.
It's coming directly to me. Um, Michael, shut off the chat, please, for.
See if I can do that.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, I don't see, all right.
As much as I appreciate the, um, the assistance.
Yeah, that, I'm gonna agree. Great. Um, so additional feedback for Michelle, Mike on this, while, um, we set them forward with some revisions and ideas? So, I, I think then it, at this time, I don't see any additional discussion, so, there's no real action that's required for us, from us, so, um, final closing thoughts, um, and then if not, we will, we'll see this again back at the uh, April meeting. Right, and it's a lot, thank you, Mike, Michelle for working. I know it's, there's a lot of different, and you hear different opinions going both ways on this, so. We, we appreciate that, you guys are doing your best, so we, we appreciate that.
All right, um.
So, we'll move on from that agenda item for the next tax amendment, that storage facilities. This one may be a little less interesting, so, um, Mike, we'll give it to you.
All right, um, so at the commission's last meeting, uh, the commission uh, completed a section three of seven review, uh, used not otherwise permitted in the district uh, for self-storage facility in the I-one district. Um, the, and commission found it, uh, that be consistent uh, with other uses in the district as a special use, so these proposed tax amendments um, would implement that. We include a definition, um, and the conditions recommended by consultants at that meeting, um, as a, as conditions of approval of any self-storage facility. Um, parking requirements are, uh, certainly, uh, well, any of it is open for suggestion or edits. Uh, parking requirements taken from this, what, um, other communities nearby are doing, but any changes uh, are, are welcome there, um, and otherwise, unless the commission uh, has any comments, we, uh, we can proceed with scheduling a public hearing for the next meeting.
Okay, at this time, we'll open it up, uh, for planning commissioner discussion? A raise or virtually raise or signal me? Yeah, I mean, it, it looks consistent with the ordinance I know, so, it. Yeah.
All right.
All right, then, well.
For next time.
Okay, I guess, what, if that, then we can uh, if we can have a, wait, we need a motion for a public hearing, correct, yes, so um not seeing it again, obviously, if we're setting a public hearing, if somebody would like to make a motion now, we also have an additional time to comment on that, at the next that during the public he, hearing meeting as well, so with that, if somebody would like to make a motion to set the public hearing for April fifth, correct, yes. Anybody, motion?
I'll make the motion.
Okay. Uh, move, either setting the motion for the public, or making a motion for the public hearing, correct, April fifth? Okay, just wanna make sure that was out there, okay, so I'm sorry, who was the support?
You meant me.
Cardy, okay, so moved hills support Cardy to set the uh public hearing for the self storage facility zoning ordinance text amendment for the April fifth meeting. Any other comments, questions, discussion? See none, um, Carol, I believe we'll need a roll call vote on this, please.
Okay, Marsh?
Hi.
Hill?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Wise?
Yes.
Cardy?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Kowalski?
Yes. Okay, thank you all. Alright, moving right along, and the let's see, we've got our uh alright, zoning ordinance update, oh, there we go, from the subcommittee, wow, this should be interesting, alright, subcommittee, or who will lead the discussion first, Mike, or or is it just a subcommittee?
Well, um, oh, Megan, were you going to, or?
Mike, you can start and I'll fill in.
Oh, well, the uh, the the subcommittee reviewed the new draft environmental provisions and um started a discussion about form based code, it was mostly just introductory, what form based code is, and there's a lot of conversation about how the uh subcommittee will both educate themselves and the public um before diving into the nuts and bolts, what form based code to consider. Which will be, uh, which they'll discuss further at their next meeting. Did you have anything to add, Megan?
No, what, just um, on environmental provisions, um basically, there are some enhanced performance standards, um, and also looking at um, for large, large acreage, um, ha- having some requirements to look at natural features and taking that into account. Um, we have some suggestions in the subcommittee about the size and scale of when to do those. Um, so if you, um, so look for those um coming in the upcoming packet, there'll be some revisions to the draft that were in that. Um, and then also talked about tree preservation, um, and how that should be done, um, and for site plan only. Um, and so there'll be again some tweaks to the draft that was given to them, the next two meetings, so April and May will be about districts in general, um, as well as form based, um, so um, if you have, you know, please communicate to staff um, any, if you are not on the subcommittee, any ideas that you have about those. Um, we're asking a subcommittee to get information to us as consultants by March fifteenth, so we can incorporate that into anything that we're drafting. Um, and then um, we're going from there.
Okay. Well, if, pardon me, if I if I have questions or comments Megan, on some of the things that are in here, I should just take them to sta, to staff, send them, email the staff, is that correct?
Yeah, yeah, and then they'll get them to me and we can go from there, I just wanna note that um some of those that was a starting point and some of it's gonna change, um, it'd be great to have your comments though before we incorporate those changes.
Okay.
And can we see, um, would we, would we as a commission be able to see a summary of those comments and if Commissioner Hill submits those, so we can all see the individual, yeah, that's why I figured if it'd be included in there, okay.
Alright.
I I'm sorry, and I forgot, I should notice, but I forgot, who who are zoning of subcommittee members again?
Um, you have Tom Phillips, Kyle Marsh, um, and um, while Hubbard, and also Karen Roberts.
And Jamie Griffin.
And Jamie Griffin from City Council.
Council, okay, great.
Chris Walker from ZBA.
Mm-hmm, thanks, thanks, Mike.
Okay. Awesome. Um, okay, uh, anything from the the commission members, or commission members wanna share from that, or committee members, I should say? Oh, she covered everything?
Yeah, it, yeah, it was a good meeting, I enjoyed it.
Right, yeah, well, good, I I thank you guys for doing that all, um, I see Kyle's hand going up, yes, Kyle?
Yeah, another great meeting, um, Karen had a lot of good suggestions on the environmental um section we're about to jump into, um, that's gonna get added, there was a lot of discussion about requirements for like a, what is it, environmental, like site plan, like a tree plan and and, you know, environmental impact, and what that applies to, um, and the, I think the general feeling was that as you're getting to larger projects, it becomes more um applicable and that for like us, like, um let's say you wanna put it in an ADU, it may not necessarily apply to like a smaller residential thing, so there's still some figuring out you know, kind of where those lines go on that. Um, that was, I think, most of our discussion, then we we did dive into some of the form based stuff, and I have volunteered to put together, um I've got some YouTube videos that we're, we're, we're trying to get like a crash course for people that can kind of bring them up to speed, so um, you know. I've got a million things I'm trying to whittle down that we can give.
Think, yeah, visuals are so important when we're talking about form based, obviously.
And I I volunteer to test drive that as the moron who doesn't know what.
Why is my my test uh test dummy here, so, we'll, we'll get it figured out. That's right, she's my unsuspecting victim here, plus YouTube playlist.
Well, thank you, Wa, for. Um, yeah, no, thank you, we appreciate all that work you guys are putting into the, yeah, and I mean, just vision, form based, I think, even when we get the, if we're clear on the message, I think that the community can see the the clear benefits of that, it's just on presentation, I think, and getting it out there straightforward. Um, and early, letting them know what we're working on, um, anything else, Kyle, from the committee?
That's pretty much on my end, so.
Anything else, wow, Tom, anybody, we good on that? Okay, alright, well. Good, thank you, good, alright, so that kind of summarizes up that issue, um. We, oh, PC reps, our last item under new business is appointing a planning commission rep to the art selection committee? Don't everybody volunteer at once, it's really exciting?
Hey, I love that committee.
Wow, yeah, wow, she's like, okay, so that's a volunteer?
Well, I don't know if I can, I think, okay.
That's a volunteer, take it, motion made.
No, 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 wait, I need to get clarification on it, because I was actually already on this committee. But I didn't know, I don't know how it works now that I'm on council, I was on it as a part of ACH, and I honestly enjoyed it. Um, but Donna Fisher is also on it. So, Michelle or Mike, can you guys, I mean, I'll do it, I'd love to do it, I just don't know if I am allowed to.
Right, yeah.
We'll check it out and come back.
Well, why, I, why wouldn't you be a volunteer?
I I don't know, I honestly don't know if I got kicked off it when I got elected, or if I'm so or if I got kicked off it when I left ACH, I just don't know how will all of those mechanics work.
Okay, so I guess we can have staff clarify to make sure everything, but other, pending that, it sounds like you may be interested in.
I mean, I'll do it, but I also, if someone else wants to do it, that's fine.
Okay. Oh, I don't see, everybody raise your hand, okay. Um, alright, we don't see a lot of other uh hands up for that, so, alright, we'll get back with you on that, so we maybe next month, but it sounds like it's it's ago, um, one question I I did have kind of off the agenda a bit though, but Michelle, did did we and I apologize cuz I did miss the last two meetings, did we appoint a secretary? For the planning commission, cuz I know Marnie Schmidt was previously our secretary.
No, um, we were waiting until you came back.
Okay, so do we wanna, I guess we should add? Yeah, so we should.
We'll add that to the next meeting.
Okay, so everybody start thinking, secretary of planning commission, it's, it's like it's not quite all the glory of chair or even vice chair, right, Tom, but you're the secretary, so you think of that, it's pretty in in the event of Tom and I get taken out, you're next in line.
We'll share, we'll share the glory with whoever's appointed, or volunteers.
Yes, and and you have to be kind of in between Tom and I, you know, the moderator.
We're still deciding why Marnie quit, so I was.
Maybe we should just vote Allison into the job while she's not here.
Oh, I wish.
You have to amend the agenda first.
Yeah. I don't know if I could quite do that, I gotta work with her, so I don't know if I should do that. Alright, uh, we'll put that on the agenda for next time. Uh, okay, so with that, um, seeing no other comments on that, that I guess, we're moving on to proposed business for Monday, April fifth, our next agenda, well, that's one of them, secretary, but it sounds like the more major ones uh are public here, hearing for our capital improvements plan. The uh, well, the ADU, we did not schedule, so we'll see that back as a discussion item. And then obviously, we also did set the public hearing for the self uh storage facilities text amendment for that. And um, any, I guess that's kind of it, and then obviously the secretary uh election, and then we'll have a the appointment to the art selection committee, but we may already have that settled, so, um, anything else am I missing from proposed next agenda, Mike or Michelle?
Nope.
Nope.
I think that's it.
Alright, well, at this time, we'll have citizens wishing to address the commission. If anybody's listening online, please hit star nine to raise your hand. To the commission. Then another.
Seeing none.
I don't see any there, okay, Mike, well, with that comes the uh adjournment of the meeting, would somebody like to make a motion to adjourn?
I moved to adjourn.
Okay, move Cardy?
Second.
Wise, alright, um, so, well, we don't need a roll call for this one, all in favor of adjournment, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, opposed? Okay, meeting is adjourned. Thank you all very much, see you, Mark.
Thank you.
Take care.
Bye, everybody.
Bye, bye bye.
Everybody.